I'll please join you with your agents.
Pledge my allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Stands what the nation under God.
Congratulations to Mike Gaudin, who is re-elected and Jason Foo, who has his election. It's first three-year term.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So the first order of business is to reorganize. So can we have any motions for a new chair? Can we appoint Mike Longley as the slideboard chair?
Second.
Anybody else? Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Let's talk about a vice chair. Andrew Brugge as slideboard vice chair. I'm going to second that. Although, any discussion?
That was a great idea.
All those in favor? Congratulations, vice chair. Thank you very much. Do we have any citizens' statements or petitions? Anybody, anybody's hand raised there?
Phil raises his hand.
You want to fill it?
Yeah. I just had a question. I'm not sure where I should interject this, folks. Is just the starting of the subcommittee or the committee for the senior center expansion?
Yes, to answer your question, I received your email, I think yesterday. And what will, we have a 48-hour posting requirement. So anything to go on an agenda for, for our meeting usually needs to be in by 5:00 on the Monday before.
Okay.
So I promise you that in two weeks' time, it'll be on the agenda. And we will establish a committee. And I'm certain that you will be there if I don't. So I, but I promise you, and it's recorded, that we will have it on the agenda in two weeks. Is that okay?
That'll be fine. Thank you, Mike.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you much. All right, anybody else? Can you put it down? Oh, we'll figure it out. So we have correspondence to the board. I have the Bay Street Trail Riders annual poker with a letter sending information on for a yearly request to hold their poker run ride out of Inman Hill on Sunday, June 25th, 2023. They have to attach a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured with a million-dollar, $2-million aggregate, which is what we require. Does anybody have any questions? We have a motion? Somebody wants to read? Move to approve the Bay State Trail Riders Poker Run on Sunday, June 23rd, 2023. What should be in second? All those in favor? Let's talk about the Lions Club, since we have, are you the king line this year? You're still the king. Well, why don't you, why don't you come up here to the He was a, he actually worked as a SDNT paramedic and he was police officer near town. Or not, still, still is.
They'll do emergency management. He died from the fire in 2018.
And he is the
Still the president of Lions Club.
So why don't you tell us about your funding?
All right. Well, thank you for having us. This is the Lions Club circus. It has been something that we've been doing for quite a few years now. We took a couple of years off for COVID. Actually, it was our first year back since COVID. And we're working with the ZBNI family circus. This is the third time that we've used this company. It's a family-owned circus. They travel throughout the country. And they are coming up with your approval in July on two nights this year. It'll be the first time they've actually done that. They have authorities provided by the rules and regulations, including the bylaw that came out with the town. The animals that are can be part of the circus, they cannot be part of the circus. They follow all of the inspections permitting that the town requires to have this. And so we're looking again for your permission this year to hold a circus.
Okay, and, and just in Vicky Burci's letter, as in previous years, just asking that we waive all of the fees as we do for most charitable organizations in town when it comes to all the required permits. And you appropriately said you provide your insurance certificate like we all did. Anybody have any questions?
I do, actually. Can you repeat the name of the company or send the name?
It's called ZBNI, C-E-R-B-I-N-I, N-D-S-E-R-S.
And I know last year there have been some concerns about dogs in the circus. Do you know if they have dogs in their
Yes, that is the only domestic animal that we actually allow.
That's in compliance with our own bylaws. We ask.
I see a
Come on up.
Yeah.
You're welcome to come on up and sit right here at the microphone, so I guess identify yourself if you would.
Sorry, I didn't hear. Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with this issue. It's a sort of a hot topic issue with me. And I'm aware of the BNI and, you know, their past record. And I know that they only use, as far as I know, they use dogs, all these horses also.
That's true. They can put the dogs.
They did. And that's what they're doing this year, Pam? That's overly, that's not so good. Yeah, I still, I still have questions about oversight for the welfare of the animals. I know with dogs, there's an USDA oversight. It has to be sort of local. The local animal control
Bylaws.
That's veterinary. I know it complies with the bylaw as far as wild animals, and I'm very happy about that. But I still wish we could get a circus here that didn't involve the animals at all. That's the main reason I'm here is to sort of just be a voice for the animals that have to travel during confined for long periods of time. I'm sure they're not riding around in air-conditioned limos during the summer. So that's, that's another concern. How many hours are there? They can find agents. You know, it, it's just something that's worth asking questions about because it keeps coming to town some form or another for many years. And that's, you know, I just would like the select board to, you know, question this every year. See, you know, see, see how these animals really are treated. Because there have been violations in the past. And it was before COVID. I know they don't need Campbell's and Hal Peters and Buffalo's anymore the way they, the baby used to. So they have cleaned up their act, basically. So good for them on that. And, you know, I'm just concerned about the animals they can continue to use. They don't have a choice.
Well, we do have an animal control officer in town who should be pretty pretty committed and thorough.
Is he available to look at?
Absolutely.
Just one thing, it's set up, convenient visits and
They're subject to all inspection. If they're in town, there'll be all the applicable laws need to be followed. So we can certainly let him, make him aware of it. And I think, I think he was, but
This is Kevin's own.
Yes. I'll ensure it's out to him.
Yeah.
Make sure. Yeah, and we want to be as good as with him in town, so. Anybody have any questions? You just got a statement of their animal practices. I'm just on their website. I can see it in their Facebook. See all their pictures of just a couple of dogs, one horse. So must have a statement. Tom looks to ask for that. We'll just find out. They have one. I know the base in the past, they conformed to the, to the bylaws. And this isn't the first time.
Right. They just say it.
Right.
Just want to say thank you for bringing this up again. I know you came, was it you came last year? No, I'm kidding. Long as you have, please come copy your inwards on the bylaw.
We have a motion. Question I would have. Do you want the motion to be predicated on the statement you asked for?
No, because it's
Issue is, the issue is just so the understanding, and Mark knows this, if for some reason, you know, that they don't conform to the bylaw in their own statement, then that at least that part of the act would go forward.
Yeah, I think it would just be a good base statement that you could use Americans here after year. So I guess what the practices are.
We have, we do have a letter from them from last year stating strictly that the animal would have been I'm sure we can get just basically. All right, so I can make a motion. I move to approve the amended Lions circus July 18th and 19th, 2023, and 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And to authorize use of the town-owned parcels located at number 3 North Avenue and number 6, number 20 Milburn Street. Motion made second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you. Would you like, why don't we do yours next? Why don't you come on? Let's go to number eight.
That's the question, because I asked members of the Lake Task Force this morning being adopted as an official board of the town.
So Because the way that, the way that I asked this question to you, so and they said that the board would need to appoint the person who wasn't a member of the
Right, but they wouldn't have to be sworn in. Right.
Well, actually, I'm not sure if we, I'm not, I'm not
We were talking about this, the seed incentive thing.
Yeah. I'm not sure if it's required or not, and neither was, at least I don't recall that Charis said that it was or not. And I just
Bottom line, take the ethics training. That's the thing we need. I did, yeah. So that's it.
We're just gonna
Okay.
I just, I know that the Lake Task Force, you're a member of the Lake Association.
Yes.
Right? So the idea is that you're going to be a member of this task force that's going to be playing advisory role for the, with the other, others, different members from the different boards and committees appointed. Just look for number eight for, does anybody have any questions for her? It's a relief, right? Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for stepping up. Appreciate it. Just, I just need to make, just need to make a motion. All right, all those in favor?
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
All right, let's go back to number six. There's a letter here from Mr. David Lowell, 40 Millville Street, who has a is requesting for renewal of the junk deal license for Main Street at the Amadon Tavern at the corner. So I'm just looking for that motion.
I look to apply for the junk deal license for David Lowell at 40 Millville.
All those in favor? Number seven is Mr. David Allen.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. So it, it looks like we have a letter. Just find the right one here. Says that a meeting of the Mendon zoning board of appeals back on April 20th, the ZBA voted nationally to recommend Mr. David Allen to, to the open position of ZBA alternate. Presenting the meeting with the, with the chair, Mr. Cardy. ZBA member Tom Raleigh, ZBA alternate member Matt Clark, as well as Mr. David Allen. So the person who resigned was, was a former, is that correct?
Alternate.
Is he still the alternate? So we, oh, that's right, because of John. Yeah, okay, so this is basically just replacing an alternate for Mr. Allen to be an alternate. You want to just tell us your background a little bit and why you wanted to do this?
Absolutely. So my professional background is I'm an attorney. Currently, I'm senior counsel with Cumberland Farms. And previously, I've served as zoning and planning attorney for a wireless company called American Tower. So in that role, I have a lot of experience going in front of select boards, planning boards, and city councils throughout the Northeast and actually throughout the country, you know, advocating and, and ultimately, you know, getting permits. And I, so seeing it from, you know, that side, what really interested me in this alternate position was, you know, I grew up in Medway. I'm from the area. My wife and I moved to Mendon last summer, and we, we love it here. And what I really love about this town is, you know, the fact that it's a small town, everybody's close. And it has that small-town feel to it. And I would love to be able to lend my experience and my expertise to give back and to, you know, help the town and also to help Mendon in the future. You know, both develop business while keeping, you know, that small-town feel to it as well.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you for stepping up and volunteering. We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And wait, so do you, do you work out of the Cumberland Farms office in, in South Grove or West Grove?
Oh, West Grove, yeah. So I work out of Flanders Road up in West Grove, yeah.
Any of the other members have any questions?
I was asked the zoning board meeting where he introduced himself, and I was with a statement from that board that said they felt that his combined experience outlasts the combined experience of the entire board, and really enthusiastic to have him on board, so his experience is excellent.
We volunteered this time. Do I have a motion?
I move to appoint David Allen to the ZBA alternate for a term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Discuss one-stop grants.
That would be me, Mr. Chair.
All right.
First off, I wanted to know
navigating us through that article we have
I have to say, in all my years, I never got an ovation like that after an article got passed. So it must have been, it must have been pretty good. I was going to say the previous appointee, we could use him, anyone who knows zoning. I'm here for, for two things. One is to update you on, on two of the projects we have going on. And also to get your authorization to have the town administrator sign the applications for two grants that correspond with the projects. The first one, at least the former selectmen know, is the water and sewer study. As you know, we're in phase two as we speak. We got a grant for that. Plus some ARPA monies that was, local ARPA monies that were matched. And they are often running in that, in this phase two and two A, I think it is. They're going to be actually going to the four sites and drilling and doing test pits and analyzing the water flow and the water quality and the water pressure to see, you know, which one gives us the highest yield or even a yield that's acceptable. They then are going to start doing hydraulic modeling on all those or the ones that qualify and and start doing their financial modeling. So we can see once an identified source is okayed, how much it's going to cost to develop the system. And I think you recall, it was all broken up into different phases and different directions you can go. So that's going on now. We'd like to apply once again to the state, the one, through the one-stop program to do phase three. And phase three would be we now know where the best site is. And you guys have given the okay with the modeling, with the financial modeling, the hydraulic modeling, the location, the system, et cetera, et cetera, from phase two. And that we would actually start the engineering, the actual design of the system. The pump house, the treatment plant, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's part of it. The other part is, if you recall, phase two also has a sewer component to it that you wanted to continue. And in that component, they're really taking a hard look at Hope Dale in this notion of bringing sewer to the Hope Dale Treatment Plant and treating it there for a fee and see if that's cost-effective, as well as looking at some of the sites they talked about sewer. I know you guys added that on at the end, and that's what we're technically using the ARPA money for. So I'm looking for authorization to apply for the grant. We're asking for $300,000. With this grant, there is a match requirement. And that match requirement is, is 10%. But we wanted to ask you for, to use the local ARPA money up to 50 grand as a match, so we can be more competitive. This is going to be a very competitive round. And this will, you know, we've gotten two grants two years in a row, so we're really pushing the envelope. But I think we got to keep trying because eventually we got to, we're, hopefully, we're going to need the money to design these things if we need to go that far. So I'm looking for two things. Authorization to use the ARPA money and authorization to have the town administrator sign the application for the one-stop.
Okay, I, just as a little bit of additional information, I had a phone call, a phone meeting last week with Congressman Washington Claus's chief of staff. Because Jack and I had talked about this, Kim and I had talked about this. And they're talking with Hope Dale as well. And if you remember, and maybe for your identification, Jason, one of the conversations about Hope Dale is that, you know, when the weather is dry and their systems, they actually have the capacity to help if we could pump it up the hill to handle 16, 16. Problem is that when it's raining, the system is leaky, so they need some work. But there is, there is federal money available. And there is a process, and she, she told me to keep in touch and to have Jack, I told her about it. I was bragging about Jack and Kim. And that said to have them stay in touch. So, you know, this really, I mean, when we started talking about this, you know, this was, it'd be great for that, but it's I'm cautiously optimistic that we may be able to call something together here to make this work. So I guess if I'm reading you right, we'd like a motion to apply for the one-stop grant and to utilize up to $50,000 of ARPA available funds as matching money for the one-stop grant and to authorize the town administrator to sign the application to apply for the grant. Does that encompass it?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to have a motion. Motion and
Second.
Second. Any discussions, please do.
Add some context here. So we have $1.86 million that we were awarded. Everyone write these numbers down, right? 1.86.
And it's in the share point.
It's, so there is a file labeled ARPA docs. It is in the finance department drive. There is a spreadsheet in there. There's also the, the cheat sheet about what you could spend it on, when it has to be spent by. It's all in this folder. Spending ARPA funds only requires a vote of the select board, okay? Just so you know, previous boards did say that they wanted to use it for water and sewer. It was very loose what that meant, right? But we've basically not touched it for anything else. It actually can be used for a certain portion of it. It can actually be used for any municipal expense based, based on loss of revenues. But we've kept it sort of there. So you have this 1.86. The deadline for spend is supposed to be December 2024, right? So assuming you keep moving forward with this, if you get enough data, you're going to have to make some bigger decisions coming up about it. Or if you start to pivot the other way, think about what else you could use this money on if you're not going to keep going. But to the extent, like, it makes, if this, if we're serious about this and this, Jack, if you think that 50,000 is enough to help us be competitive in this round, then I'm all for it, right? This is, we're trying to get some data as fast as we can to make good decisions, so that's
Yeah, to definitely want to try the monastic as much as we need.
Well, that's kind of what I'm saying, which is if, if you, it's really that, I'd have to know, Jack, whether you think us giving more, like, even 50% would be, would give us a greater chance if it matters.
I, I don't think so, and here's why. If we start giving too much, they're going to say, go do it yourself. I, I think it shows, they want to show some, some they want to show that we're in the game as well and that we're willing to put up local monies. They even have a category in the grant is, are your local, is your local match local ARPA fund? So I think they're expecting the ARPA funds to be used this way. Listen, I, I don't have to talk for, for the selectmen, but you know you're going to, if it gets close to December of '24, you're going to have plenty to use that money on, and hopefully it's this, this project. But if not, there'll be other things. I, 50 is more than enough. 30 would be the minimum.
Well, the motion's up to 50, right?
Yeah. That's the motion you made.
Back to the ARPA fund, sounds like use, this is actually being used for seed money, study money. Get to the point where we get to execution numbers that they presented previously. This 1.8 is a draw.
Correct.
So do we have a sense of what kind of funds we need to get to the point of execution? Or do we think it's more like
Well, I think it's that 50 million and 150 million that they were talking about.
And so prior to that, so once we get to that point and we do the full-blown execution, we're going to need federal grants. We can't Well, I don't think, even, even before that, which is what the conversation was. And that's why, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I, because I know you will. But that's why I asked Jack, really, I wanted to connect Jack who's really the kind of, you know, the, the point on this with Washington Claus's office. Because they seem very enthusiastic. They would, they would like very much to help. And the way he was explaining it to me, it's not really earmarks, but there's a, there is a process. But there's a, there is a process and but what we need to do is start early like now, talking to them.
If I may, I I agree with with the chair. Um. You're talking pretty big money, fifty million, whatever it is, Kim. We'll know, you're gonna know. It may be at the end of phase two that you say, timeout, this, this isn't working. Or if we're lucky enough to get the grant and you wanna move forward. Three hundred and fifty thousand is gonna be plenty to get the final design and engineering done. And then the only thing left is getting the big bucks. So we're. I think we have plenty of time to gear ourselves up for any federal or or state. Grants for infrastructure. It probably will also take a match of some sort from the local town. And that's way down the road. How that's done, there's different ways to do that, but I think we're okay so far. But I think it's a very good idea to be cognizant of that December twenty four date.
That's what I'm focused, that you're.
That's s- sort of. So I mean. I think it's in terms of timeline, right? Because there definitely is a loss point here that we wanna make sure you get. So if you know. That it's, there is a juncture in which you're going to wanna bring whatever you're considering to a town meeting realistically. You need to find out whether or not the town is in support of pursuing this as a real project. And I think that time is next May, one way or another. And or you've spent every dollar of this, right, that you could have allocated to something else, right? Um, and part of that, being prepared for that meeting, which Jack and I were already started talking about in January. Is not only finishing this phase of the study and costing out, but. There is a portion of it that has to get done and you probably need to pay. If we talk about for a firm, probably it's another firm, right, to do sort of. A cost analysis based upon available parcels and what that would look like in terms of revenue build out realistically in terms. Of water and sewer, meaning. Find it like Jack just did for the, for the other, for the bottom, but right. Every parcel that's over ten acres, that's town owned, that wouldn't be touched by this water. And then if those were developed to a certain capacity, what revenue would that then increase? And how would that affect the mill rate over the next fifteen, twenty years, right? You need that data to bring to town meeting, because otherwise it's a no, right, because it's scary numbers. So. I would say. Don't spend it all.
Well, I guess I'm gonna gauge for, you have one point eight now. We just had about fifty thousand, one point eight going towards this next, uh to match the grant. I'm just trying to gauge, other one point eight needs to be expended in the next eighteen months, right? How much do we really, you know, swag, and how much of the one point eight needs to go toward getting this water and sewer to the point we're ready for next May? Because if we find out in May to know. And you still got a big chunk of money, our hood is spending the next six months. What I wanna understand now is, if we think one point eight, set aside a million for water and sewer. Now we've got eight hundred thousand, we can look at saving, we can accelerate it.
Hundred percent. So I I think, but like I said. I. I think you need to know, right? You're not gonna be ready for November. It's too soon, right? You need to, we need to do this financial piece too. It's critical. And so I think you might have as much as one point five to set aside realistically. I mean, I don't think you need to spend much more to get the data that you need in order to bring forward and be prepared.
Yeah, that's a sense.
And I think we need to.
Yeah, I just think, and then once, once you have all that data, you can make the full pitch. And if it's a yes, it's a yes. If it's a no, you can make it a valid no, yeah? And then if it's no, then you'll have time to, in the same fiscal year, to plan.
So if it's a yes, in May, right, no, just last half ball.
Oh, it's a yes, yeah.
Would you then suggest that the remaining ARPA funds? In the next seven months be allocated to that project? Or we really have the ability to spend? That remaining money on some, you know what I mean?
No, so then the next thing, and Jack and I have talked about this before, you need to have a person. And I, maybe it's Jack, outside of his role in this, when the planning grant runs out. I need to have a person that is actually then timelining, coordinating, funding, possibilities related to projects. What that would really look like. And then you'd know how much of a match you need from this available money for whatever the next part is.
Okay, so what you're, what I'm hearing then is in May, we get a yes, we still. Need matching funds of how much we do not know, so we might have to run the risk of losing some of the ARPA.
You're not gonna lose it, because if you get to December, let's, I'm sure there'll be an extension anyway, let's just assume. You can get to December thirtieth. And then decide, you could even amend your budget at the end of the year and decide, oh, we're not gonna do it. It failed again in November. Can amend your budget then and use this one time funding source to pay for whatever you want. You just have. On your capital plan. You know, so you'll have options. You just have to be ready to pivot, you know, and I'm sure. You're supposed to spend it, but you know what you don't spend. You'll get back, right, eventually? So.
See, I thought there was. I hear you. And I thought, and I think I was thinking about Senator Fattman at the. Senior Center meeting, who had to be speaking to the district meeting. Saying if you're doing it, but then executing it, that's a function of fire, actual execution, not just plans. I'm not sure.
Well, they, you do need to spend them, right? So like. That's the problem, which is we're already two years out, right? So like, it's, we probably can't get to December thirty first and be like, oh, we've got an idea to do the senior center with this now, right? I think you have to be ready to go with something else. And even if it's just for loss of revenue. That's what you're gonna, so every quarter, they state sends me a report. Then I log on and I say, nope, haven't sent anything, and ask me what projects we're working on. I just zero it out and keep going, right? At some point, obviously that's gonna have to be shifted over to somebody else. But like, at some point, you're gonna have to start putting projects in there. And even if it's this one, and then it turns out to be something else, like we can start putting this in for the next. I I think it's not, I don't think there's a chance you'll lose it. Is, so I don't, I wouldn't be worried about that too much. I think you just really do need to be prepared for. You can't let this water hole drag out. Years. So like, find the answer, see if it goes. If it doesn't go, use it, right? Right, roads is an easy one.
But we don't have to solve it now, like you think. Roads might be something. Out there, maybe some smaller targeted things. We're not assuming all of the full downs, but. We could do a natural road, a short nose, we could see highway.
Yeah.
That are ready to contract that. And then one other thing I would add into this in the conversation with. Our congressman, as you know, that that congressman also um handles Hope Dale. And it really piqued their interest that there are two towns next to each other. Could do this together and needed it together. You know, they have both water and sewer needs as well. So the idea of it being kind of a regional. Project, which is how a lot of other these water sewer things happen. Was a, was a plus. I think the session we attended, I think Jay said that water is one of his primary focuses. So be fully planted. Yeah, I made the mo- it was made in second, so. Right, so all those in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Thank you very much. Number two is Kim received a letter from the Lieutenant Governor, I don't know, about two weeks ago. Um, and the, the governor is setting aside one point five million dollars. That can only be used on affordable housing. Now, that's the good news. The bad news is, and this is only for me. Is that it's gotta go through the same portal, the one stop program, which is a pain in the butt, but. Um. I wanna use, I wanna apply to that grant for fifty two Providence Street. And at the same time, I'd like to give you an update. We went out to bid, I I can't remember exactly when, but probably March, something like that. Um, and I, we got some good interest from three firms, one, two I knew, one I didn't know. Nonprofits that were very interested. And of course, I can't talk to them once the RFP is out. And unfortunately, no one bid on it. Now, we kinda suspected why. Um, it's a very complicated site. It's complicated because of wetlands, because the distance between. The site location and the well are wetlands, and we have to directional drill. To access the site, we have to go over a stream. Locate the septic system is always fun. So. I wasn't surprised. So what we did next was we um. Had some Zoom meetings with these three nonprofits separately. And asked them, why didn't you apply? And all, every, all three of them said the same thing. That there were just too many unknowns. They didn't know what would happen when they designed. An access road, and then they'd have to go in front of the Conservation Commission, and who knows what happens? Same with septic. And um, and actually the same with the directional drill for the well. Um, and even though we've done a lot of work and and Bill Henry and um Anne Mazar. Well, before me started this. Um. But, you know, we we decided even before we saw this letter. That what we needed to do is somehow find some monies for an engineer and a wetland scientist. To at least pre-permit, if not fully permit, a preferred design of a septic, a preferred design of an access road. And the final design on directional drilling. Um, and that would get rid of those unknowns. And then low and behold, uh, this grant came up. It's capped at a hundred thousand. So at one point five, you know, you do the math. I think we have a very good shot. One of the real top priorities is using town owned land. For affordable housing. And I think we have a a good case. Of all the efforts that these guys have been, you have all done to try to get this site ready. And that we're still falling sure and that this will get us over the hump. So I am asking for authorization, uh, again, to have the town administrator sign. The grant for a one stop for fifty two Providence.
Are you looking for a motion that we need?
Yep.
So motion is to authorize the the town administrator to apply for a one stop grant. For this, uh, up to, what was it, a hundred thousand dollars?
Yep.
For housing? Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Now I'll go back to the portal. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll never come out, right? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Can we move these out of order? Because my laptop only hasn't powered up.
Of course.
I don't have the charger and it's nice. A lot of answers.
Just talking about urine, and my question is that I saw that the FinCon was posted.
Yes. So, yes, so. In terms of urine transfers, you have one tonight that, that's submitted. The rest of them aren't ready to go. I just started compiling the data, posting this week's warrant. Um, because we had some substantial spends last week, which threw everything in a wire. And so, uh, typically the process. Those who are just getting here, or those who are just here. So at the end of the year, the last few months of the fiscal year, we have the ability to transfer. Anyway, we want, basically within the budget. In order to do that, you have to have the boards sign off and the FinCon sign off. So they're pretty typical. At the end of the year, we usually do.
What are you, whatever you're deciding? Or the process, something else.
Well, I basically, so what I, what I do, just really straightforward is. Once we get to May, right around now, I go through the entire budget, line by line and by my line. I see where all the deficits are. I see where that looks like this in excess. I then go into those lines and take a look at what's going on. And then I sort of estimate where I think we're gonna be at year end. So I see what kind of money we have available potentially to cover any issues. And then I bring every meeting from now until the end of the year, I'll bring a spreadsheet basically that has these transfers on it, and then we'll also. See that. Yeah, basically, and anything that's like. Unusual, it's, it becomes kind of obvious. A lot of them we do every year. Um, we stopped doing sort of small, I don't wanna say tinky tacky, but like little tiny, you know, twenty bucks here. Where we stopped doing those, those are all journal entries that clean themselves up anyway eventually. And even next year, there'll be even less, because the way we vote on the salary now is, some, on the budget now, is salaries and expenditures separately. Or we did for twenty three, which means like you can't interdepartment in your own department, salaries and expenditures. This year, we voted the budget by department. So that this won't even, there'll be less next year, because. Some of these transfers you'll see that are coming in now, like this is one from highway. It's interdepartmental, because it's two, from two different parts of highway. But it's actually just still highway. So next year it'll just be all in one. And it won't even have to go. So a lot of this has been sort of cleaning up. Um, I have a giant spreadsheet that I'm working on. It's saved. You can go and look at it anytime. It's in that same finance committee folder. I'm just starting to compile all the data. I think, I mean, I don't wanna make any promises, but it looks to me again that we'll be able to cover snow and ice within. We usually, we do a really good job here of underspending. Okay, uh, budgets are already really super tight. There's not a lot of fluff in there. That went out like six years ago. There isn't much. But we also, our budgets are so small that. You know, so every year, we typically have two to three hundred thousand dollars left over on the expenditure side. We typically bring in about two to three hundred thousand dollars more on the revenue side. So we usually have somewhere between. Let's just say two hundred thousand and six hundred thousand in free cash that we certify. It's pretty. Do you see something beyond those? Something is, something's off, right? Something's a little bit. Yeah, it's something is.
Or something got, you know, there's a.
There's something.
Pretty intricate process to make this all happen. Sometimes if you miss a step. It's not like we, we don't lose money. But sometimes we just, it gets delayed.
But, I mean, our budget is so. Organized and straightforward. It's not complicated. The funds themselves are not complicated. It's really a very easy budget to sort of follow and understand. So to that end. Just started, just started putting the list together. I I found about, we're like plus six hundred. And like, already, right?
So is this, is this ten thousand?
So. He's here, he can talk about it, but this is a good example of one. So. We. You'll see one typically, he's early, because I'm not ready. So they're penalized because I'm not ready to go. So typically, I will have one that's got twenty and twenty on it, so that we don't have to do twenty of these sheets. Um, and that's what you'll see next time, but don't hold up one because my whole twenty aren't ready, right? But they come in like this in an email, in some forum, they say, I'm short here, I need money here, vice versa. Um, and then we burn them here and we vote them all, it's one big giant vote. Um, they don't even necessarily, a lot of times, these guys, they don't even need to have a refunding source. They just need to tell me that they need money. This person happened to provide both, which is great, but they don't have to, right? Because I'll find it.
Like, my question is, when we had discussed a couple of weeks ago, we had two things that needed to be. We're gonna use FinCon reserve. This was for the, for the uh streets we burnt and the leaf blower, and and we had approved it. Finance had approved the streets we burnt, not the leaf blower. And then at the town meeting, we did approve the leaf blower. Is this outside of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So like, because that hasn't actually been entered into the system now, like these are the types of things you gotta make, like, pay attention to. The balance still says in the system that FinCon reserve is forty five thousand dollars. I know it's not forty five, because I know we just approved sixteen. And so I know that's the sort of small, just, you know, it gets. You know, a lot of pieces moving in the last two months, right? Um, the other thing you should know is that we can spend and pay any bill up to July fifteenth. For this fiscal year. So after, after July fifteenth. Next fiscal year only. So even contracts, anything's gonna be in by that, that date. But you could still spend from this year, right? So till then. Um, but I will have, I'm planning, so the FinCon is meeting next week. They're not gonna review a list of transfers, I don't think. What they're gonna do is talk about the process and see if they're gonna give the chair authorization to sign off. And then I told him to plan to meet and lose twice in June. I mean, in an ideal world.
Right.
But, in an ideal world, this would be done already, but that's the. It is. So, um, but you can basically watch it in real time if anyone is very interested. And it's in a folder online that can be looked at by everybody, what's going where, and um. That's the process, but.
So this is, this one is from supplies to road material?
Yeah, they're from two different accounts. And you can see that one is four twenty one and one is four twenty two, right? Um, and I can tell you just by looking at them, I have them open right now, because I was doing this. Um, and I can tell you just by looking at them, I have them open right now because I was doing this earlier, that there's, there's plenty, there's actually plenty of money in both four twenty-one and four twenty-two. So I'm guessing that he's just being cautious.
So we're taking out of road materials and putting in this plot?
Yeah.
John Dudley's on the call. He's on the line. John? Is he still there?
He's there.
Hank?
He's muted.
Do you some?
You say so.
These are companies are created by the departments when they're instantiated.
We could talk. This has been like the last two years I have been obsessively working on this. So what I'll tell you is. Up until FY twenty, the beginning of FY twenty-three. The accounts were all a random hodgepodge of whatever they wanted in an accounting system that were used. And whenever anything was new was added, they basically, there is a standard chart of accounts that the state uses for municipalities for accounting. It's ours was very, very, very loosely based upon that chart. Okay, so we just got a brand new financial system and I just set up just for FY twenty-four. A brand new chart of accounts that matches our departments and the correct departments and spread it out a little bit better. It's still going to be bumpy because it'll be the first time they're actually being used, right? They have new account numbers. They did use some of them for twenty-three, but like this is. So that's going to be, I'm sure that's going to be a headache for a couple of months. People are going to be upset about that, but. It's as simple as putting a new account number down. Hopefully that should be fine or finding your department, but. Um, and hopefully I get those questions soon. But it should be great going forward because it matches now with the state as it should be. Everything is categorized in the correct way. Any accountant could come in and see what makes sense. I mean, before we had this one account, so this one category that's called other miscellaneous that you can use, like other municipal miscellaneous. And that was the main account that we've used for the last twenty years, one ninety-nine. It's also another, so most of the employees were under there, like. All of the random departments were under there, like it's, yeah, I mean, could it be drilled down even more? Of course it could, but like.
Do you have, based on the mapping you did, waitress, the old team map?
So in that. Well, that. That much data.
Not all data, just. He could go back and look at KBS and map.
In that giant. That same spreadsheet, it's in there in the tabs, right? That's why I did the old budget, new budget, and there's a tab that shows what it was and where it went. And you should be able to see where they're linked together. I think the biggest question mark is going to be. Where salaries are being paid from, which is new because before they used to all be grouped together. Now I correctly split them. If you're half this and half that, I've charged it to the right department now. And we don't have a person there right now also, so that's going to be bumpy. So, but once it's, once it's going.
Dummy workbook. So if I didn't touch it. I just want to, we could actually untie mapping based on that key.
I can save, I can save a read-only version.
I wouldn't, it might mean not to be read-only, it's going to convert. I'm just saying, would it make sense? KBS Academy, historically, and converted to the new. Otherwise. We can table that for a second. I asked John Dudley, he's actually a blog. I wanted him to just kind of weigh in about this ten thousand dollar transfer. What it was for. And he said it's a funny connection, but it looks like he can hear us. I can, I can hear the kids in the background. Who knows what this ten thousand dollar transfer is for?
So the ten thousand dollar transfer is going to be for, um, it's to cover our expenses through July first for fuel, oil. Um, supplies at the shop such as toilet paper, uh, favorite towels, soap, whatever is needed. And um, small tools and supplies that we need to fix things, like we have to run the Koopman or Ace Hardware to pick something up.
They have.
Okay, so you're taking from Roman, putting it into supplies, actually.
Yes.
For just supplies. Okay. Thank you. That's, anybody else have any other questions for? Thank you. Thanks, John. Thanks, Jeff.
No problem.
Hope you get all wins. So we need to take a motion to transfer ten thousand dollars from highway road materials to. Highway road machinery supplies. All those in favor? I'll start signing this one here.
I just want to show you just so you know. In that same FY twenty-four department request, there's a tab in here that says new FY twenty-four budget lines. All the way on this side are the old KBS lines and then right across are what they look like now in the new system. And you should be able to go in there. It's, it's green. It's the green tab.
But they're not, it's not exactly what it's.
No, they're not exactly, but. Right. And I, and my hope is, I mean, it's been, you should be able to actually look at, it should link back to one, two, for the most part. I mean, hopefully all the links are still there, but that's what they're designed. You'll see, if there's a new department, like we have a new HR department. You'll see there's a gap on this side and it's over there. And then you'll see there's nothing in one ninety-nine, right? Because they've all been, you can now go for different ones and it should link back to what it was. And then the first tab has the historical data for the last, you know, whatever, five years, ten years.
Something was merged, it's new?
Well, that's the problem. The data. It's a whole thing, but um, the data from the old system was, it was not merged into the new system. And so I had to create basically one by hand to do the comparison, which is why we have such a lame. Such a basic version of a budget document for this year at the town meeting. But you will have this year's data that's in there and you'll have next year. So you'll be building. And I'm sure there is a way to do it. I just didn't get there.
So KBS historical data still exists. So in terms of backup conversion, it might be possible.
Yeah, I think, I think it's possible. And like I said, I downloaded and you can save for forever. I don't even remember how many years back I did now, but like. This, I have through twenty twenty in here, right? So you've had, at least had, these are all directly from KBS. So that's there. You won't have the detail like, you know, like it's in the system, but you at least have at least till twenty twenty and then you'll have to go forward. So if somebody figures out how to take this, put it in there and then to work even better, right? So you'll have that. And then same thing on the positions, which I was just saying, which I know no one is really thinking about. This one with that, but I made a chart for the same sort of thing, which is like. The new departments and then the old departments. And so you can see sort of the same thing. They link to each other. They sort of show where they belong now. So like, it's there. It exists.
Yeah, it exists.
Right, so it exists. Um, and it's all saved in places that can be accessible. So. And you, okay. So you'll have, I don't know when you're planning on meeting again, um. June, I don't know. We'll get to that. And then we'll figure out what would be, I believe it's, it's May third. Yeah, but I don't, so let's talk, let's wait before we, because I want to talk about hiring and that's really more pivotal than any of this other stuff that we're doing. All right. So let's talk about positions. We're moving on to that. That's next. So. We have a bunch of stuff happening right now. And somewhere created a little chart. Here it is. So. You have a lot of moving parts right this minute. So let's talk about that. So your human resource officers, last day is tomorrow. Okay? That was a twenty-five hour week position that was benefited, not that, not that you ever used the benefits, but it was. Um, before that position was that, it was a human resource coordinator at eighteen hours a week, right? For various different reasons, we upgraded it to officer. I re-advertised it as coordinator and I'll talk about why as we talk through this. It's posted. It closes on May twenty-second. All of the applicants are coming to me, all of them. My expected appointment dates, so I have a little chart of that too, right? June seventh is when I'd like to potentially bring somebody here, which is really quick turnaround time. I just want to say this with a little bit of a caveat. It's been incredibly difficult to find someone for that position. On the last two times, we do always have a great number of applicants. Most of them are moved to municipal life. And my main concern with this particular person is there is no one here to try. So, um, which leads me to my next part. So. Those duties. So I'm going to be gone, right? End of next month. Laura is also going to be out for most of June. You will not have an HR person. So it's not a panic message. In the meantime, um, Shelley and I have been working on sort of figuring out what absolutely has to get done and what can wait, okay? In terms of uh, the functions that Shelley was doing, uh, I'm going to take, you know, all the hiring and all the employee relations stuff from now until. Whenever I get done, right? So like, uh, that's not a problem. We sent out an email a week or so ago to see if any employees were interested. We did have a couple of people step up. Two of them are currently on staff. I need authorization in order to be able to compensate them above and beyond their additional doobies. One of them, I think, has the space within their current job capacity to take this on, so that would be a stipend. Um, and my stipend would be based on seven hours per week at their current rate. So that they do it within their job. So they basically, so rather, it's basically the same time. The other one is a part-time employee, so that would just be straight time for the number of hours worked. I say all this. With the caveat of. They have jobs currently, right? So in order not to interfere with their existing jobs, one of them can do it within their time. The other one will be doing outside of their current job, meaning they will work separate hours and potentially separate days in order to accomplish what they need to accomplish. It will not be at the same level as the person that was here before. This is basically to get us from point A to point B. And hopefully that suffices, right? So that, if any, hopefully that position is only vacant at most for two months, right? That's the hope. And then this, you've got some people that are competent, this stuff will get done. They're going to start next week and they've already met with Shelley, hopefully, and you guys say yes to this. We're good to go, okay?
You have a dollar figure?
So financially, what I, I don't have a dollar figure. Because. Yeah, I'm not there yet. Um, what I will tell you is. We can afford it. That's because we will have the space that was the existing person from now until the end. It was part-time. And that was part of what I was trying to hurry up and get done today. More than the transfers is to make sure you know that you have the capacity to pay for these things and I can assure you that you do. Um, we have probably, my guess is we have. Like I said, I think we're on the plus side of five hundred thousand in terms of. Available funding in different, it will wheel down towards the end, until the end of the year, but you have space to do this comfortably. If you were to hire out for a temp firm like a Harper's or whatever, you're going to pay more than that anyway. So my estimate is it's two hundred dollars a week for one and it's a hundred and fifteen dollars a week for the other one. That will obviously go up once we go past um, July, you know, two percent. But so you're talking X, Y, and Z. So they, that's what I'm planning on there, assuming everybody.
Spends up to thirty-five hundred dollars to now the end of the year, additional funds?
I. I would make, I don't know. I thought about this. It's because we still have to meet with the employees. They still have to agree. And I don't, my biggest fear was that we would limit them to a certain number of hours and we really needed more. So like, I want the job to get done, right? And that's really my concern. So.
How would you like the motion to be deployed?
I think um, maybe just authorization in order to. Yeah, I don't know. Maybe thirty-five hundred is enough.
I'd be looking for a motion for, for the, up to the town administrator's discretion to spend up to addition of five thousand, five thousand dollars. For the rest of the fiscal year to fill in for the.
Vacants, just say vacancies, because I got more.
The vacancies.
And I'll have more detail based on those conversations.
But what this does, all those in favor?
Sure.
Yeah, so I was, well. I was told it was plus fifty dollars an hour depending on to take, and it really depends on the level of capacity that we're talking about. Payroll is different, benefits are different. And so that's why I want to talk a little bit about what I think we should do with that job, like a little bit.
Yeah, so that's another topic.
Yeah, I mean.
This is just, all this is, is just to stop and again, and only, this is to give it the next two weeks.
So, and I should say, those employees and maybe if it pivots to a different part-time employee, we've had some other employees mention they might also be interested and have some room. Like I need to have space to sort of put a puzzle together to get this.
Space though, because you said.
If, if not, listen.
For the next two weeks.
If not, I'll come back with more concrete numbers when I get to June seventh. Like if they, like. That will be fine. I just want to move on this, you know, fast. Um, I, I also have to say. In the same conversation, I was still on the line. We need to, we need to revisit the compensation issue related to the highway surveyors position. Um, that position is officially vacant now.
All right, let's finish this. We made a motion, made second, it's a lobber to spend up to another five thousand dollars for this fiscal year. But to replace the, the duties of the. HR person. So motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, right. So let's talk about, let's keep talking about that position. So. Part of the new structure that we have, that we created over the last couple of years, right? So when I first got here, I was both finance and HR and everything else in between, right? And over time, we've been lucky enough through attrition or grants or efficiencies to sort of start carving out little windows of time and trying different models. HR is particularly difficult to staff, one, because it's so weird in municipal life. But two, getting somebody that's qualified, that wants to do this job and will stay through it in an environment that is ever-changing and sometimes quite difficult to be honest. Yes, very challenging. Um, it's been really hard. I do think there's room for you to consider, and we didn't talk about it because it wasn't present during the budget. We have a half, we've been talking about a half financial analyst position that's in the budget already, or the DLS report recommends one. It might be worth looking at as you're considering that, whether or not we create like a benefit slash accounts payable slash financial analyst part. I also think there's room here. So I've been doing a lot of, a lot of things for a long time. We have other jobs now that should sort of be transferred out, like presumably the budget is going to be transferred away from the manager. It's going to be transferred into finance. And, you know, some of the, the day-to-day financial stuff is going to move into a different department, right? That was intended. That's the plan. And so part of that capacity and space, I think, has to be. Give the HR part, part of it should go back to the next person that comes in, which is. It's as great as these people are and they have been really excellent. One of the things that I found sort of challenging in the last, last two years is that. You know, and I know I am a bit of a control freak, make no, no mistake, but like. It's very odd to me to not be involved sort of in the hiring of the people that we have here. We only have forty positions. I find that very strange, whether we do it through a personnel board or we do it through some sort of committee meeting of selectmen or whoever is selectmen. I really think there's a value in having, freeing up time for your manager administrator to be on those panels and be back in that role. I found that the first few years when I was doing that, I found it to be incredibly rewarding, right? I was, I mean, obviously for the people that I've recruited specifically myself, I was. Involved in them. And they're then the most successful that we've had. So I think that there's, there's something there, right? And in terms of just, you know, the negotiations piece and all of that was always supposed to be partially handed over, you know, to HR. And that's a recommendation that's in the DLS report. I don't know if you're ever going to get there in terms of getting a person that would know enough about municipal life in order to really have those skills. They should be there in terms of employee relations, but you definitely need a person on your committee that's. Finance doing the analysis. That person should not be the manager doing all of the pieces, the administrator, which is what I have been doing for a long time. So I think there's room here for you to carve something out in terms of HR. I just don't know if it needs to be full-time HR in that capacity. And to give some of those responsibilities all the way back, right? So in terms of the financial stuff, if you're really going to move it away from my office. So in terms of the financial stuff, if you're really going to move it away from my office, you have some room, so.
Yeah, I think what's interesting, nothing about benefits thing, is benefits in terms of assessing benefits, financial analysis, benefits in terms of bottom line, is a finance action.
Correct. Correct.
So, I mean, what you're saying makes sense. I would expect the next person sitting near you would be a primary person, driving, hiring, firing.
Hundred percent.
Town operations, because that person is up in the movement, a small-town operation. Absolutely, and, and I mean, some of the HR, the administration aspects, the operational, that's connecting a lot of outsourcing. I feel like there are people that do the payroll.
We process it.
Yeah, yeah, so I think it's very different. You could break that off and stand it, it's not, not into, you know, sensitive and less sensitive.
Yeah, hundred percent. Process, I totally, and that's the thing. Part of the goal in the creation of the officer was always kind of what the DLS report said, which is, I always want to have an HR person with you at the table for negotiating, but the fact is, it's a luxury, right? And it's, and we aren't getting people that are coming from other municipalities, the people, and I mean, to be as candid as possible, part of the reason we went in that direction is we had other department heads trying to interpret contracts as they saw fit. And then apply them as they saw, so we wanted a central point for that. And that's how we got two of the HRO, an officer instead of a coordinator, because we wanted a person that was the authority on all the contracts. If you pivot that back to your next administrator, it creates space. If you're moving some of this financial stuff off, then you're good. That's, right? And so that's all, that's all I want to say about that position. So that's part of the reason why I'm only advertising for coordinator at this point, is to see what's even out there in a limit, more limited capacity. Maybe there's somebody that wants to work part-time and can do the processing piece, and then you can add, figure out how you're going to do the rest. That's was my thought process.
Is that eighteen now, position again?
It's eighteen right now, yep.
Are you thinking that one of the bridge employees would maintain some of those skills after the new person?
I have a thought about it, but I don't know for sure, is the answer. I mean, I, I definitely think being involved in the creation of one of those positions, I definitely think there probably is capacity within one of them. But I don't actually know if that really is the best use of that time, or if it's not some other application within its own area that it's better suited. I don't know yet, but I, I mean, I do think, I mean, payroll is payroll is payroll. We were supposed to be switching anyway, this is one of my projects that I'm never going to see. We're switching to bi-weekly payroll and more, as we've been trying to do this for two years, in an electronic system where you log in on your phone, your time sheets are on the phone, which in theory should free up a whole day of payroll for somebody, which frees up all those hours, because now it's only every other week and that's how, and Harper's does a lot of that, and so that's where we were headed.
Yeah, and right now payroll for, for, for the different departments, a lot of them take care of them.
Well, yeah, the large, the, all, all the public safety, right? But I'm saying in terms of, they still have to send them over, we still have to send them up, that sort of thing. But like, I do think there is, the payroll piece is still going to be, is going to become more efficient and it will create space. So just wanted to give you a little background of why I posted for that. Next, let's talk about highway. This computer's going to die.
This, now, this was, this was something we, we brought up, we brought up on my, on a table in two weeks, or do you want to talk about this now?
I want to talk about it right now.
Okay.
So the study isn't going to be complete until the end of this month, okay? And this is mostly just an update for, for you, but they, we won't know, you won't know, you won't have decided what you're hiring for, for a while, right? The realistic timeframe for hiring somebody for that job is what I said, been come a couple of weeks ago, it's probably September or October. I don't think that in good conscience, you can continue to pay a person forty dollars a week in order to do that, a dollar more per hour from now until September. We would have to then go back and bargaining with them. I did say in that session with them that we would revisit this once the highway surveyor had officially left. So I think what I'm telling you is, I want to set up that meeting so that we can have that conversation, okay? And with the known that it's probably from now until September or until someone is appointed, okay? I think it's, that's important to do.
I, I think the, the way to, to deal with this, to deal with this fiscal year revisit again. And the question is, how is the world changing now?
Right, and they're keeping detailed records. I can also attest to the certain, the things that I think that are above and beyond what we had said. And so I feel very comfortable, and you're going to need an interim. And I mean.
I know, I did, have any of the other members had a chance to speak with, with the call center about highway? I mean, I had a meeting with two of them, so you did, Brandon and Elena has it, Mike have you? Okay, so the three, obviously.
I, I have.
You have it, sorry. You get a pass, they don't get a pass. But, but, yeah, you should talk with them, I think we should have him. All the men.
Yeah, of course, that's, yeah, I mean, they're great to work with, but, you know, I love the call center. Give a plug, they have in two seconds for, on the next.
So what we can do is plan a meeting and, and revisit this in two weeks to level the figure?
Yeah, I, what I want to do is basically set up a follow-up meeting with the union and with everyone, we have to talk about what they want, what you want, that's what I want to do. I think we should do that now, before June thirtieth. I think that should, that conversation should be locked and loaded, so that you have a plan to get you from June to September, July to September.
I, I would agree in, you know, in theory that, you know, that the, the dollar an hour isn't adequate for the job that's being done right now. So we'll have, we're going to have to come up with that number and negotiate it.
Yes, okay. Next. So we just advertised a week or so ago, you might have noticed, for a health and conservation administrative agent. So, it's been a long and bumpy road to get a conservation person, we've been over this many, many times. We had a good candidate, it's not going to work out again, we've been, since. So, um, we do have the possibility potentially in the fall to maybe regionalize with another community, but they have been out without somebody administratively for many, many months. So I come back to you and said, what are you going to do? Just get somebody at the meantime, you want them bargaining, what do you want me to do? In the meantime, last meeting, we, you approve this other position, right? That's an agent for over there. Okay, so they need fifteen hours, so.
It's an agent for.
For health.
For health, right.
My thought was bump it up three hours. Let's see if somebody else can at least help them out administratively, maybe we'll get lucky. My understanding is, even though they may have preliminarily talked to candidates, might have been interested before we posted, that it's possible that some of these people have this experience that we need, and so might as well throw it out there and see if it sticks. Of course, I say that with the caveat, just as a reminder, thirty-seven dollars an hour is a lot to pay for administrative person. So I would hope that the expectation would be that if the person stays and you go that route, they get certified as a conservation agent, as well as a health agent or inspector or whatever that is, just whoever it may be. So that is posted right now. And my hope is to also bring that back, closes on the twenty-second, appoint on June seventh, meaning that brand checks are happening. So you'll point both of those first meeting in June. Highway surveyor is probably September sixth for appointment at the town. Interim town administrator.
Sure, back to the posting, um, you said you hope that they become certified. Is that part of the posting in terms of, you know, the expectation?
I think the trickiest part there is if we're keeping them together. Because if we have the chance to regionalize it, we might, and I know that the person that we would regionalize with makes forty-two dollars an hour, right? So it's not a cost issue, it's really just about staffing issue. If you find somebody that you have that's capable, and seems like they're capable, and you, they could even go up potentially, because the inspections are not, it's up to fifteen hours a week. So it's not as if every week is fifteen hours, there could potentially be more room for conservation in those eighteen hours. So, but we don't know until we see who's.
Just reacting to, bring me somebody on thirty-seven.
That's, yes. It posted the range, but my understanding is that's sort of the number that's being floated.
Right, so.
Yes.
I would think if somebody's committing thirty-seven, either is or expect to be certified.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, if we're going to be paying somebody thirty-seven dollars an hour, they better have it.
So I just want to make sure that that's marking the criteria that it have it, or they agree.
I think that they would agree to be interested in doing it if, if we so chose to go in that direction in the future.
You're saying you're going to have basically cross-selling services, health fees, and the conservation.
Yeah, potentially, so that's the thing. So you're talking about from now until maybe the fall. And maybe this person is awesome and you want to train them, and then we have our own person and we don't regionalize and you don't need it, right? You're at eighteen hours, higher rate of pay makes total sense, golden. But I do think, and my expectation would be if they're coming in with experience, that they are higher skilled than somebody that we are training just from the jump. So it would justify paying a higher rate, but my expectation would also be, are you interested potentially in becoming an agent? But it's hard because we're not committing at this moment to making them become an agent.
Actually, we're, we're bringing them at a higher rate of pay, but we're not committing to make them an agent to justify.
Well, let's put it this way, the health portion is bringing them in at a higher rate of pay. And so then the question becomes.
Conservation.
So it's still pretty in two different fiscal years.
But.
All right, I'm with you, thank you.
Yeah, I think you'll have a chance to revisit it and maybe you'll get somebody awesome and this problem's about to solve itself. Always mindful.
I just want to.
It's like, you can do it online as classes, we pay for the certification, but it's, well, it's, it's true. It's a very, very particular, but you have to know about conservation, it's very specific.
Right.
Uh, it just turns out that anybody that we've recruited that has that specific knowledge base isn't also a great candidate at the same time, so it's been tricky. So, uh, so we're going to try this and see how it goes.
See, I just want to point out that, you know, two weeks from tonight is May thirty-first. And then, and then two weeks after that will be June fourteenth.
I know, this is why.
We need to have back-to-back meetings.
That's actually, first and third.
Right, so, right, so with, that's. So.
So we would go through, I just didn't think we should go three.
No, we, first and third is, is usually what we do.
Yep.
Why I don't want to do the thirty-first is one, I don't want to. And two, two, we definitely need to meet the first week in June because of the timetable in the pipeline of these. I won't have what we need by the thirty-first. Um, we'd only really be meeting to do maybe transfers and whatever, the bincom's already meeting and I don't want to push most of the stuff to the twenty-first.
So we're going to do June seventh.
And then the fourteenth.
And the fourth.
No, wait, June seventh for sure.
June seventh and then the twenty-first.
Potentially.
Sure.
I don't have a problem doing off-site, you know?
Yeah, right.
I just, my Wednesday's tight.
First and third is the goal.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be.
Do you want to do Tuesday or Friday?
So glad you've said that, because that leads me into my very next thing. The interim town administrator. So I've done five applications and I've received phone calls from two people that I know fairly well, that are interested. I'm going to have follow-up conversations with them, because one of the question marks here is, one, we can talk about pay, right? We need to know how much capacity you have in this fiscal year and then what you're going to pay them in the next. I've, I've got recommendations from my friends that do this on this, like the Collins Center, they say you're going to pay between seventy and seventy-five dollars an hour. Okay, just so you know, I assume that you're advertising for part-time, we haven't had that conversation. These guys are typically retired and can only work nine hundred and eighty hours in a fiscal year, right? We've really talked about how many days in a week you'd want, or how many, whatever. The contracts are usually three months and then another three months. Realistically, I think you guys are looking at six months. And so I need to be able to, when I'm talking to them, I'm going to have that conversation with them, which is, I really do think, and I, luckily, I, I think I know these, I know two of them very well and a couple of them I know, so like, maybe you can have conversations that are like, I think it's going to be six, I think it's going to be your appointment, I honestly think your appointment is going to be in January for your new person, right? Because part of the issue, and I have this on here too, is you're going to need more money for all these jobs. Highway surveyor, everything, you're going to need to get it in November, probably, right? So just, so if you, we can hope that it's sooner and it's in the fall. But realistically, I'm planning for a January one start date for whoever your new person is, right?
But we have to talk about the process of, of vetting these people, right? And I've talked some, some with town council about as well, have you been conferring with the nurse about?
So we have to do a normal process for interviewing, like we would for anybody else. You should absolutely hire a firm to do the next thing. Yeah, so the interim, we're bringing in the applications, we're going to get them all, I'm going to have, like I would with any other, any other recruitment, right? I'm going to contact them all, have like some of the basic questions about availability, start date, I have their resumes on file, right? Like, sort of, if there are anybody that's worth their salt and managing, they want to talk to me anyway, right? To find out what's the job, right? It's actually should be a pretty easy job for the first three months or so, the second three months are a little easier. And then you bring them in, you interview them, right? And I can tell you what my thoughts are based upon whatever, and we can, or we can do smaller panel of interviews, which some of them might, usually you bring back three, like if we were using, had a firm right now, they'd bring three, right? You're not going to bring all seven back, right? I, I really need to know where these people are on their hours for the year. That's kind of a critical piece here, right?
They can create summaries and send that to the.
Yeah, and I will, right? I mean, I will tell you which ones I know, which ones I like, don't, who's good. I mean, I'll tell you all the information that I glean from what's here, and then you can pick whoever you want. The goal there, in a, in a dream scenario, so I put May close as soon as June seventh on the ad for that. I would think that's closing.
I, I thought we put a date in, May thirty-first. That was the email, that they needed to respond.
Oh, well, then even better. So, then the seventh is probably the meeting I was expecting to bring them here. You might want to do a separate meeting just for this, that's what I'm thinking, on a, on a different day. And, and it might be, they might want to interview remotely, you know, with me.
Well, if you can, but again, if you, that's great that you get those ads and you, you vet them. But just get those summaries to us, and we're going to close on the thirty-first, let's see what we have on the thirty-first.
Well, I'm going to, I'm just, I'm going to start doing it now. Like, I don't even want to, I'm not going to wait, like, I'm going to start, the goal would be to, so assuming that you have funding available, I would imagine, based upon the limited amount of staff in, in this building in the month of June, if there is a possibility to get somebody in here, even for the last two weeks, we want that.
Well, that's the idea.
Right, and so then you have overlap, right? That's part of it. I mean, I think that it's a very fast, even for.
Well, that's why we picked, that's why I picked the May thirty-first date, was the idea was to get somebody in here so they have
Right.
at least a week or two.
But they, they might be wrapping up other jobs or things too, and so that's sort of it. That's an ideal world. I mean, the worst-case scenario is you're appointing somebody in July and then they're, they're here.
Yeah, but we need to get them in here.
Stand in like transition to that point, so if the best case doesn't happen, well, how is transition working in terms of just making sure we understand, state and state everything that's in place, every article in the air, you know?
So I, I still have that same timeline that I sent you guys many, many months, it's in spreadsheet form, it's in the selectors folder, right? And basically timelining out things in my month at this point that need to get hap, like the critical things and then sort of bigger picture things. In terms of, I mean, I'm confident if we can get one of these people, I mean, in here, where you're going to be good. I mean, I think your expectations around what they're going to be able to do and how much they're going to be here, that I think, you know, I, it's a.
How much they need to be here at this time of year.
But I do, like, I think in terms of transition and just finding them where around, you know, like, even if they could come in and then go out and come back again, I think it's critical, like, to find a time to do that, right? And so that's the stuff I've got to find out, which is, you might have seven great candidates, but if they're really not available until August, then.
Then they don't fit the bill.
Yeah, or, so that's the sort of stuff like we would do, like, like, but they are going to ask what it pays. You know, how long you expect it to last for, how many hours a week, how many of them are on site, how much of it is remote? They're going to ask those things. So my recommendation is probably twenty hours a week. My guess, maybe two days in the office, maybe, I mean, it really is up to your budget. And then, you know, it's seventy dollars, it's seventy dollars.
So where are we, where are we at?
Which is only a couple of dollars more than what I made, really, so.
Where are we at right now?
Budget?
Yeah.
I'll, can let you know very soon. So that's what I'm saying, like, I started to do it last week and then we, because we also have to do Allen's this week too. And I'll know for sure in a, a very short amount of time where we're at. But I feel very comfortable based upon what I saw today, which makes me feel like we have this room to do all these things. And so I feel like you're in a good position there, it's not financial, you're going to be strapped, it's going to just be.
Yes, in terms of just full-time placement though. In terms of just full time placement though, I mean, leverage a firm, but we also include the idea of search committee, right? The idea is, well, now, now we're going from the intern.
Interim is needing to get somebody in.
Right.
Yeah.
But as far as, what I would, what I would like to do is to use a professional search firm in conjunction with a search committee. I actually, it is a, I would like to, um, include, you know, an elected employee, I really, I really think that Tom Burke would be a good choice. I think I actually would like to have the.
Absolutely not. Uh, sorry.
Thanks for your, thanks for your input, appreciate it.
I know.
And I'd also, okay, well, you know, we'll take it offline, discuss it.
Right, I, you. I've worked with many of these firms, right? I, I think I've told a couple of you my recommendation. If you want this to be successful, for real, for the future of this place, there really is only one firm that you should even consider working with, and it's the Collins Center. Because they specialize in sort of figuring out what it is you want for this place and where you're going, right? So it's not as simple as just recruiting people to hire. You guys have to still have a conversation and decide what you're hiring for, that's big. They can facilitate that for you, I mean, they can. Um, I've worked with all the firms, they're all great in different ways of saying that. I mean, I just think you guys have to have some meetings about that specifically and it wouldn't hurt you to bring them in just to do that piece of it. And let them give you guidance about committee, who should be on it or not. I would never have an employee on the search committee, I might have members of the community, which would be obviously you guys, you know, obviously members of the FinCom, uh, somebody for the planning board, school superintendent, um, you know, anybody, that's who should be on your group, but not employees. Yeah, but still, still an employee of the town.
Right, elected official, town resident.
Well, yeah, we're gonna talk, I'm just something to agree, there's not a done deal, it would make sense.
We're gonna agree with that committee. But at this, at this point, there's no question we have to hire, we're gonna use.
Well, I mean, do you, do you form the rules for the committee before the committee exists, if you like?
You really wanna have them guiding you every step of the way.
There's, there's two or three firms out there that can, that'll do this.
You know, right.
What we do is pick a firm and then have the firm give us advice and maybe they'll give us some strong reasons why we shouldn't have a search committee. And that could be, I, I don't know.
You definitely can have one of the, the steps along the way of the interview process be with that community panel, absolutely, right? That's, that's a great part of it, you're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna collect, let's be honest, you're gonna get fifteen applicants. Four of them are gonna be actually qualified and none of, one, two are gonna be retired, people ready to be retired. Two of them are gonna be people on their way up, right? You're gonna hope for there's somebody good in that four. You're gonna bring back five, right? And have five meet with that community panel, but that's after, firms are gonna do communities, they're gonna survey, they pass the staff what they need, they're gonna ask you what you need, they're gonna ask members of community what they need, right? They're gonna ask, that's what they're gonna do, resident poll, they're gonna ask all that, they're gonna paint this picture about what the community needs. Really, people who really know, like, for real, are you guys, right, what you need in the seat? Like, you know what everyone's gonna say, that's the normal stuff they say. So you need to be able, more than anything, vet somebody and make sure they are legit. That's all that really matters, that they can actually do math, that they can actually.
That's why, that's why I'm hiring professionals.
Hundred percent, but.
I understand.
Those search firms are sales firms.
Right.
And they're great, but they are there to sell you a product, you're paid them to deliver something to you, right? They wanna be successful, they are there to promote the people they brought in too, it's their reputation on the line as well. So you need to really, you guys are in a weird market of where every place is vacant around here. You're gonna get a look real soon at Blackstone and Hope Dale about what your applicant pool looks like, right?
You're saying cultural bit over bigger difficulty? Are you balancing?
I'm just saying, we've come a long way in nine years, you can remember who was here the last time, right?
Well, I remember the process nine years ago, I think we came way over there.
It did, it did just fine, and I like MRI as a recruiting firm, I still love Alan Gould very much. You know, and I was able to change the one descending vote to a yes in the last nine years, so I'm good there, but like, it's, you're gonna be. MRI, listen, MRI is great, they do a great job. And I think that Rick Wade does a great job too, who I just worked with, Roy Orleans, and I worked, but I, for what you need here to really have those conversations and get you collectively where you need to go, community wise, I think you need the Collins Center. I do love Mary Pardy, that's no secret, I think she does a great job, but like, you need somebody that's gonna actually sit down and not just tell you what you need, like here, you guys need to have this couple of meetings to figure that out. They, they're the best at that, plus they're a state agency, so you're good, right? So everybody else is just.
So are we gonna pick, so that, I think that.
So. No, I think those are all the position updates. Um, if you have any strong feelings about hours or time or any of that, since we're not really voting on it, like, wanna vote on it, I mean.
I don't think there's anything to vote at this point.
I mean, I need to have these conversations with these people, I'm certainly not gonna deter them, obviously.
I appreciate you bringing it all to us and, you know, but we're not, we're not there yet to take a vote yet.
Okay, so, so that's where we are on all of that.
So a cou, but a couple of things, um, are we gonna pick June seventh for our next meeting?
Yeah, so that's why I kept saying June seventh. I already told you why, but I also just think, I, in terms of really potentially having turn around, if we should be in panic mode or we're in a good spot, June seventh is a better date, like, if we didn't get applicants or it doesn't look like, then we'll know, like, yeah, things are, you know.
Let's, let's pick June seventh, is there any other old business anybody wants to bring up?
We still have, well, at least after you talk about accounting.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, right, and maybe even during the day.
It's gonna be.
Only because these people may have jobs or daytime people, right, that you want to talk to. You might wanna have longer conversations with them and then well craft, um, questions and do that sort of thing, right?
So we might pick, might have to be next week just because Memorial Day is more of a, which is a week for Monday.
Yeah, no, I think you should probably be planning to do it, like, we could maybe do an executive session on the seventh, that like narrows down the ones for sure, like, our recommendations and these people are, I mean, we'll get closer to it, okay? And then I have to start doing a calendar of like interviews and stuff and seeing what's what, and then I'll tell them when, like, it should be, right? Even if they're over a couple of days, I don't know, but I'm, I'm optimistic, I will say this. I think there are two very good candidates in there and one that I'm very excited about. I don't, don't know personally, but their credentials look amazing for what you guys need, and so that makes me excited. So hopefully.
Okay.
Great, great background, great financial background.
So let's talk enough for that, okay?
So, we've had a great accounting firm for eight years, I will not say who, I think Eric has been amazing, he's been in many different roles that we've had. Um, but one of the responsibilities that we have, right, is to regularly go out to RFP, make sure our prices are competitive and that we're providing the best. And so we had the opportunity this year, well, we've had it before, but we, we've joined in the opportunity this year to go into a joint RFP through CMRPC, just Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, RFP's request for proposal, okay? For shared accounting services, for a one year contract with the option to renew for two years, okay? They received only one response from their proposal this year, I forwarded you guys and I knew, um, their one proposal. We also have received independently a renewal possibility from our existing accountant.
And he did send it to CMRPC.
Uh, that I don't know.
He told me, he told me, he called him, because just in full disclosure, last week, well, I had spoken to him once and told him he needed to submit. And I spoke to him last week, he hadn't, but then I said, well, you, you need to go through that process. So he called me back an hour later, he called CMRPC and said, okay, they said, send it on, send it out, so you could follow up with them to verify, appreciate it.
Well, my information from CMRPC is that they've only received one proposal.
Right, and then I, I discussed it.
He might have missed the deadline.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he doesn't have to be through that process, so.
Right, we don't, because it's a professional service, just on council, we could just.
So I did have a, so Eric's firm, it's been great, they've been here for a long time. That bid, that bid is sixty thousand dollars with options to renew. The other proposal that we got is seventy-five thousand dollars. I met with, virtually met with that firm in the town of Hope Dale on Monday through Zoom to, like, to do a question and answer session. They seem very knowledgeable, ready to go, there's also the possibility, though I did not submit that in our proposal about having somebody on site potentially, but I know that was an issue in the past, and so, um, you know, I think in terms of this, and I said this to Mike earlier, is, I, I think Eric does a great job, I have no doubt. And maybe in terms of continuity, considering the amount of change that's going on, it would be best to stay with them. Uh, the other side of that is, this firm is new, right? They have ten other municipal clients. They might be able to provide a service that we've been saying that we might want, which is somebody on site a little bit more. And you are doing this switch right now, right, about going to the DLS and switching over, so there might, there's a possibility here that the timing could be good, because it's a new opportunity and their contract would be for three years, so it would create stability. But I think you know my preference, so I just wanted to be transparent with what your options are.
What's your preference? I don't make preferences, she said.
My personal preference is to go with Eric and because it makes the most sense in terms of continuity. But in terms of where you're going, with the DLS study and making sure that professional standards and making, if you're looking for a clean slate organizationally, which is a different approach, which is not where I'm at, then that's another option for you.
And I spoke to Eric about finding your contract.
But he said, you said one year was options for Eric.
Yeah, it's always an option, yes.
I thought that you referenced seventy-five, this is with the new firm, it's about an active, it's up to eighty, three years.
Yeah, right, but it's only one year.
So each has a one year commitment in either direction and you can step away from either Eric or any firm.
And would say, I mean, just like with an auditor, you really need to be looking at three year, and you need to be planning for that and that before the last year happens.
What struck me on this, you know, kind of this reference expertise with what you do or any reference, so, I saw no reference to Springbrook expertise.
So they do, they, they primarily use VR, which is a different another, but they have, um, they have experience with Springbrook, one of the people that works there now actually interviewed for a job here, so that was very strange. It's much like, that is the, one of their primary leads in their firm. So that was the only thing that gave me pause, otherwise I thought they were very polished and very knowledgeable. Like, they see, there's, there's three of them that we would get access to, so I thought their presentation was good, but, um.
Well, we don't, but we don't have Eric's proposal.
We, he submitted a, um, back before, whenever this would be talked about, December, he submitted a proposal. That's what I used for the budget amount, which is sixty thousand I put in, and then he sent the follow up emails just a couple of weeks ago. That is the proposal, it's basically continuation of accounting services.
So, so, yeah, so I, um, about the, the marketing, so I took the opportunity to, to call several of the references and also some of the town officials. Continue the project list, but not on the first references, and to be honest, it was slightly more. So, I kinda echo your, your, those, to say what.
I, I feel very strongly that, um, especially with the transition that's going on with you, I really think it would be a good idea, especially with Springbrook and he was, and brought it in there. I, I really think that, that I would actually even look for a motion now to just, um, you know, give an additional year contract to Hershaw Associates and just stick with it.
Just a quick question, Eric is our Springbrook, so he's probably our expert in terms of.
Yes.
And if you went to Mark, it's still be on Springbrook.
I think if, at least in a minimum, going in the RFP process like this, much like we're doing for IT service in the same process, it lets you know where your prices are competitively. I will say, we have been always very fortunate to get really good pricing from the people that we've had. Um, and I've always had great working relationships with these vendors, and so I could never say that we haven't, like, would, I would never say anything bad about any of them, I mean, they've been great, very responsive to me. So going forward, I hope that remains, uh, that you don't, so.
I'd like to revisit it maybe years time, and I'm unsure why I see the, the deep, uh, benefit.
I mean, I wondered about that also, well, there also is three percent of that, there's a three percent fee built in there, you can see they post a CFC, which makes me again think. Well, they have to be funded somehow, I get it.
So why be looking for a motion?
Eric Kinser.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would move that Eric Kinser, that the, um, that's like twenty-fourth of July, one to. Make a motion to, uh, renew the contract with Eric Kinser.
One second, I'm gonna have a motion second, that app is requested, this is two thousand, yeah, which we'd like to do for. All right, all those a favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good choice.
Yeah. All right, so we're, we're going to, uh, next meeting is gonna be June seventh. And if we need something sooner.
I'll let you know. Yeah, hundred percent, like I said, I mean, I think we'll, I'll keep you updated, um, we are satisfied with the positions. And then hopefully, um, hopefully, maybe one of you two will be more available even for interviews. Great, you're gonna love it, you wanna interview each other, you're full, oh, oh boy, it's a real treat.
Anything else, anybody who wants to bring up, any old business or anything unanticipated? If not, then a motion for adjournment.
Do we wanna talk about completion downstairs very quickly, just in case, um.
Well, it's, sure, that's all busy.
So, uh, I met with both Danny today and, uh, the furniture company, right?
I noticed the contract was actually.
Right, so the floors are getting finished tomorrow, the carpet's coming in tomorrow, the floors are getting finished hopefully tomorrow and then over the weekend. And then the furniture delivery, so they've been, we have to send them a thank you. Central Mass Surplus is the name of the furniture company that we always buy from, we need to send them a thank you. They have been holding all of our furniture in storage for over a year for free.
Free is good.
So, um, he was here today too, so we have a plan now about getting the pieces that we had already paid for in a previous fiscal year in place, um, so as soon as next week. There are some other pieces that we need to order still, more chairs, a conference table, all of that stuff. And so I'm gonna be getting numbers on those as we figure out year end. Um, I'm also gonna be figuring out in terms of making sure cost wise, everything's racked up for this project. And it's the same for the campus, which is, that's scheduled to be done by June thirtieth. I told them I would stay through to make sure their invoices were all set. So in both of those projects financially are both right now scheduled with space, there's room there for both, but it is over. Like, you're good, okay? Which is why I'm gonna wait and see if we can pay for the, I may, I may need money for the table, let's see, like, how much that comes in. But we should be good on both of them, right? We've always had a little bit of room, um, but I'll know better probably tomorrow, so.
You work back in the architect business?
No.
Too much good news in one week, I had to bring it up.
Well, I mean, I think you're gonna have to pick up that torch, I mean, I would, but based of my, like, based of being at the senior center today, I, I mean, honestly, maybe you should just pivot there right now, like, they have to get, um, they need to be prioritized for next May too, that senior center's gotta get up on there in terms of getting on the debt schedule. The school's gonna come up with an override and so is BBT, you've got to.
My, my, my reason for calling Congress's office was to find out about funding for the senior center and she very matter of factly told me there is nothing for that.
Right.
We can't get any help for the federal, that's what she said, but when I said want to resort, she was.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's infrastructure, right? I tried to say, but this is.
Senior section, maybe you say toilet.
They are. Well, I'd be curious to see and hopefully Jack gets that one-stop grant for 52. Because if we really are, like, hopefully we can, well, we've talked about it in the past. And part of the limitation of getting that, that parcel developed was the cost related to getting across muddy road. Which is why we never considered really developing it, which is why we said it was good for open space, which is why we said it was good for housing. But if water does go in right there, then it might change and that senior housing could be bigger, you know? And we did at one point, 60 years ago now, I was contacted by a local assisted living senior, whatever, a company who was interested in that parcel. They'd like, they would build a center and all of those things, but.
In terms of agenda topics. Do you recall any senior center, you think you should bring, you know? Bring in a couple folks that spoke, I mean, say you're in formalite and get, and they just plan. Capital planning, capital planning is not, not so much a structure, it's just capital expenses for equipment, right? I, I think it's also, you know, this long-term debt planning, perhaps a few, three to five years financial tension, it all comes together. Start putting that to paper. Yeah, well, that's, actually, part of the, it, it all fills in the DLS study and the master plan. And we, what we really need, with Kim talking about a year ago, you need to have a meeting in summer to set some goals, set some direction.
I wonder if you need to.
No?
I think you need a couple of different groups, but.
I agree.
I think you need a senior center committee.
Yeah.
That has to have a key staff person.
I promised, I promised at the beginning of the meeting.
And it sounds like you have a couple of volunteers, the committee should also have a financial person on it, but I don't know how that's gonna work. And then you should also have, you know, hopefully they already have some great volunteers, so that should be good. I mean, just think about the police station building committee, how often they met, what they did, and this. They need some oversight, so.
Oversight or guidance?
Both. Both, well-intentioned, right? But the best committees in the projects that actually get to completion are the ones that have organized groups that are following a process. And so the library, police station are great examples. Some other examples, just name ones that were before my time, buildings that go build on land without any authorization that still exist, no? Bring that up, oh, I should take you over there, I should take you over there. I said, so they're essentially squatting and then we had to sign a letter or cease to desist, that was real fun nine years ago. How dare they, I'm so insulted that the town would stop, these well-intentioned volunteers. Yeah, I mean, you need to basically be involved, right? The, the debt part is easy, you know, just bring in, you know, if they'll send you upstairs.
All right, a motion to adjourn?
Planning the debt part is easy, but, you know.
Thank you.